Hello and welcome to the Pittsburgh City Council Cablecast Public Hearing for Wednesday, October 16, 2019. My name is Michael Wentz and with us today is Alex Nagy, our Sign Language Interpreter. The public hearing will be on the following legislation. Bill 2019-2033, Petition from the Residents of the City of Pittsburgh requesting a public hearing before City Council relative to awarding reparations for the Black residents of Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania because the legacy of slavery, Jim Crow, and the continued systemic and structural oppression of the white supremacy and economic injustice. The petition is valid in accordance with the Home Rule Charter. This concludes the reading for today, Wednesday, October 16, 2019. Thank you and have a wonderful day.
Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to this Cablecast Public Hearing of Pittsburgh City Council for today, Tuesday, October the... Thank you, October the 16th, 2019. As is our tradition, we begin by reading the purpose of the legislation before us. And so, Madam Clerk, may I please have the purpose of Bill 2033?
Bill 2033, Petition from the Residents of the City requesting a public hearing before City Council relative to awarding reparations for the Black residents of Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania because of the legacy of slavery, Jim Crow, and the continued systematic and structural oppression of white supremacy and economic injustice. The petition is valid in accordance with the Home Rule Charter.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. So, my name is Councilwoman Kraus. I will be chairing this afternoon's public hearing. We are joined by Councilmembers Burgess and Gross. I suspect other members will be out shortly as their schedules permit. I would like to go over some of the ground rules that pertain to public hearing. We will go through the list of registered speakers before moving on to those that came that did not register to speak but wished to register comment. We ask that when you come to the podium, that you would please begin by giving your name and the neighborhood in which you reside so that we could have that for our public record. The green light will indicate the start of your three minutes. When the yellow light comes on, you'll have one minute to summarize your thoughts. And when the red light comes on, your time will have expired and we're going to ask you to relinquish the podium. So with that, we're also joined by Councilwoman Harris. With that, I will begin with our first registered speaker, and that is Khalid Rahim. Welcome, thank you for being here.
I'm glad I'm able to participate and I'm glad I'm able to attend. My name is Khalid Rahim. I'm from the North Side Community in the neighborhood of Manchester. And I'm here to speak on behalf of a demand that reparations be granted to the Black residents within the city of Pittsburgh. One of the things that I have in my hand is a poster which gives a few snapshots of some brief historical periods that many of us should be familiar with. We talk about reparations because of slavery. We talk about reparations because of the period known as Jim Crow. And we talk about reparations because of a practice known as convict leasing, whereas groups of Black men, women, boys, and girls could be arrested and charged with any crime ranging from vagrancy to loitering and could be subject to incarceration. They would be given a bond, oftentimes that bond would be paid by a major corporation such as U.S. Steel, for example, and they would be relegated to work in the coke or the iron mills, factories, or whatever. This is known as the practice of convict leasing. There was a very strong relationship between U.S. Steel and places like Birmingham, Alabama, and Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania that was a major part of this particular type of practice. And the reason I cited U.S. Steel is because oftentimes, we don't think of southwestern Pennsylvanians having strong ties to really structural, organized institutions of Jim Crow, structural institutions that promote white supremacy and economic injustice and exploitation of Black people. But this is a very good example. So, this is just a very quick piece of why we think that reparations are due for the Black residents and the Black population of Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. We could go on and on. We could talk about the relationship of slavery to the University of Pittsburgh. There's some of the people who started the University of Pittsburgh, for example, were slaveholders. We could talk about Robert Morris University. We could point out that Robert Morris is one of the founding fathers of the country, was also the money man and one of the main financiers for the American Revolution. And he was able to help fund the American Revolution because of the money and the profit that he made off of the backs of African slaves. So there's so much of a deep history, deep-rooted history, economic history, social history, political history, that ties slavery, Jim Crow, convict leasing, mass incarceration, police brutality. We could go on and on and on into the conditions that contemporary Black people have to deal with. We've had numerous studies, the most recent study being the Gender Equity Study. We can go back further and talk about the studies that came from the University of Pittsburgh, profound poverty, profound oppression and exploitation. We look all around us. We've built two multimillion-dollar stadiums, but the conditions of the Black community overall have not changed in over 25 to 30 years.
Thanks, Mr. Rahim.
So, we demand reparations. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for being here. Our next registered speaker is Renee Wilson. Renee, are you here? Okay, Celeste Taylor. Did I see Celeste here? Yvonne Francine Brown. I don't think I saw Ms. Brown here. Jay Ting Walker, are you here? Okay. And our last registered speaker is Jackie Smith. Are you here? Okay, that exhausted the list of registered speakers which wish to register comment at this public hearing. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak before City Council today? You would, sir? Come on up. Would you please begin by giving us your name, the neighborhood in which you reside, and I'll wave my discretion as chair and offer you three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Yousaf Ali. I live in the Point Breeze area. The case for reparation, from my point of view, has to deal with basically dealing with the wealth gap. And because of, particularly in my neighborhood, which is basically being gentrified or what is sometimes called urban renewal, which tends to turn out to be Black removal. And so there has been, because of the wealth gap, because if you look at the wealth gap of the people, for example, who live in Larmour or in Homewood, if you look at the... And you as councilpeople, if you don't know this, you should probably become really familiar with it because it is a part of the crisis. And the only reason that it can actually be dealt with effectively is to consider, or not consider, is to implement a policy that deals with repair, deals with some kinds of restitution, deals with some kinds of exclusionary policies and issues, you know, that are directly connected to the economic disparity that exists between those communities. I know, for example, that the medium income in Larmour, for example, is around $25,000. If you look at other communities, you know, there's about a $15,000 difference. If you look in the city, there's about a $30,000 difference, you know? So that the only way that this disparity can be dealt with is by giving some serious consideration to the policies that have caused economic insufficiency in those communities and to address them in a concerted way. Basically, I know there were programs in the past which dealt with affirmative action of which have been pretty much destroyed by making it an umbrella for all communities and not specifically given reference to the Black community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so with... Sir, do you wish to speak? Who else wishes to speak at this public hearing? Okay, sir, I'll bring you up and then we're going to close the public comment portion.
She has her hand up.
I'm sorry, I didn't see you. Okay? If you would, then, please, come on up. And just... Ma'am, I think you might have come in a little late, just in case. We're going to ask for your name, neighborhood in which you reside for our record, and then you'll begin your comment for your three minutes. Welcome, thanks for coming down.
Sure. Justin Lang Brookline. I wanted to just add on to what has been talked about, reparations, and talk about the variety of kinds of reparations that city can consider. That, you know, the UN has five elements of it, of reparations. The first is restitution. That's the idea of thinking about like a way of restoring someone to the original condition. That could look like payments, that could look like a number of things that was a policy designed to restore order. It could be done in specific locations. Like, for example, you could name some of the policies that have been done in the Hill District or others, in particular kind of restorative ways that would be part of building a movement and supporting the movement for reparations. It does not have to be one big grand, like, you know, Ed McMahon check. Another element, the second element, is compensation, and that's direct cash payments. Rehabilitation, that could be for psychological care. Physical cost, for example, for the incredible cost of gun violence and looking at the roots of that and what would that cost, or what kind of policies could be offered in that regard. Satisfaction, that's one of the weaker ones where you're like doing monuments or... But something that's acknowledging you caused the problem, or you participated in it. And the last one would be guarantees of non-repetition. And that would be some kind of commitment that you wouldn't let that happen again. Again, this is the UN's version of reparations. And I think one of the places that the city could look to, and I'm going to go back to the example of U.S. Steel. U.S. Steel also was involved in funding the Ku Klux Klan's development in Alabama. There's a Pulitzer Prize-winning author from Pittsburgh who actually has written about this. And so you could look to the capital class of Pittsburgh to actually help pay for that, to look at that. Because the city often did the bidding of folks like who ran U.S. Steel, the other industrial families, the Melons, et cetera, and actually stand with the citizens and say, "We know that it was the capital class that did a lot of this work on racism to separate working white-class folks from Black people to, you know, protect ourselves." And that would be a way of actually representing the people of the city versus who I think the city usually represents, which is, you know, the capital class and doing their bidding. So those are my comments and thank you.
Justin, thank you. I appreciate you being here. Okay, please come down. Welcome, thanks for coming here.
Thank you. My name is Jordan Loy. I'm from Garfield. Yeah, I think that there are a lot of ways that city council, as well as county council, can take ownership in terms of providing some form of retribution for the Black community in Pittsburgh. And there's been many ways that it's been pointed out. And for instance, like, we have everything that's happening with the Equity Commission, and we're obviously really going to depend on, since it's just a commission, we're going to depend on elected officials to actually give it the authority that it needs to pass whatever recommendations that it actually has. So that's a part of retribution, that's a part of creating equity within a city that is continually deprioritized the Black community, be it with like UPMC, for instance. Every single time, there's an opportunity to actually penalize UPMC for the atrocities that is committed against us, be that through medical testing, or how they mistreat Black women, or how they mistreat their workers. The list goes on. This city council and the entire city refuse to ever defend Black people against UPMC. So it's like, we're hearing, I'm not going to say everyone, Starling Harris, but, um... But there have been so many opportunities for this city to recognize the way that it is continually oppressing and removing Black people from, like, the place that we originally had. And you all have these opportunities continually. Like, there's platforms that you all can follow and make as elected officials. There's like universal basic income that you can collect, you can actually tax UPMC. There's like stipends that we can give out and vote on for City Council to actually provide money for the lowest-resourced people in the county or in the city. There's a lot of steps that can be taken, however, it's going to really depend on you all following the commission and following the things that folks are recommending and some kind of back and forth for there to be any sort of equity in county council and city council. Because repeatedly, you all are showing us that this is what you want. So we're going to have to see something different and you all are have to, you'll have to come up with some kind of ideas to present to us, be that with One Pittsburgh or however you want to do it. You have to penalize these nonprofit entities who keep exposing us to more and more harm, just for one example. But yeah, thanks.
Thank you, Jordan. Thank you. Okay, so with that, I'll close off then the public comment portion of the council meeting. If there's...
Hi. I say that for the...
Okay. Sure. I'm sorry, are you... Who are you? I'm sorry. Yep, I got you here, Jay, thank you. If you would, I just need to go through the, sort of, the ground rules. I need your name, where you live for the public record. You'll get three minutes. Yellow light comes on, you'll get one minute. Red light comes on, you relinquish the podium. Thanks, Jay.
All right. My name is Jay Walker. I live in Shadyside, and I am the Chair of the Green Party of Allegheny County. Today, I'll be speaking on behalf of the Green Party of Allegheny County and then on my own behalf. The Green Party is the only top four national political party that fully supports reparations. Our national platform reads, "We commit to full and complete reparations of the African-American community of this nation for the past 400-plus years of genocide, slavery, land loss, destruction of original identity, and the stark disparities which haunt the present evidence in unemployment statistics, substandard and inadequate education, higher levels of mortality, including infant and maternal mortality, and the practice of mass incarceration. We recognize that reparations are a debt, not charity, that is owed by our own and our other nations and by the corporate institutions chartered under our laws to a collective of people. We believe that the leadership on the question of what our nation owes to this process of right ought to come from the African-American community, whose right to self-determination and autonomy to chart the path to healing we fully recognize." This is from our national platform. "The Green Party of Allegheny County fully supports the push for reparations from the city of Pittsburgh for the generational impact of directly racist city policies and decisions." Here are my own comments, they're about the need for reparations. "As a light-skinned man, I'm shielded from some of the direct impacts of white supremacy. My outward appearance does not shield me from the indirect impact of generations of systemic, systematic government-enforced institutional racism. As a Black man from Alabama, my father experienced the full brunt of America's racist legacy. The wealth created by our ancestors was pilfered for generations, massively building the wealth of the United States. My father's family moved from the Jim Crow South and grew up in heavily red-lined Harlem. He lacked the privilege to dodge the draft and was pulled into the Vietnam War where he was permanently traumatized. The war eventually killed him, thanks to the Agent Orange sprayed by our own military. This collective trauma has had major ripple effects on my entire family. I share this story to debunk the myth that reparations are only concerned with something that happened hundreds of years ago. Pittsburgh has its own racist legacy, which I'm only beginning to learn about. We can still see the deep effects of redlining and the segregation our neighborhoods and schools experience to this day. Just this past weekend, I learned how our labor unions excluded Black workers, which U.S. Steel was then able to take advantage of to break the Great 1919 Steel Strike. I know that for generations, Black workers at U.S. Steel facilities got the lowest-paying, highest danger jobs. Any potential reparations need to take into account the cumulative historical trauma and theft, much of which was actively enforced by our own government." Thank you.
Thank you, Jay, thank you. Okay. Okay, we're going to ask you to be on time, please. If you do... Who are you?
Jackie Smith.
Jackie Smith, okay. Jackie, we started at two. Thank you for being here. Did you hear me go through the three minutes name for the record, all that? Okay, good. Thank you very much, Jackie. You have your three minutes.
My name is Jackie Smith, and I'm a professor of sociology at the University of Pittsburgh and with the Human Rights City Alliance. And I'm here, I'm bringing two copies of a report that a number of groups in our region participated in compiling for the United Nations Universal Periodic Review of the United States. We're providing input to the United Nations as it looks at the U.S. Human Rights Record, which has been outstanding in the world for its consistent and extreme violations of rights in regard to racial disparities. And we want to, we provide a picture of Pittsburgh, and we draw from a number of studies that I'm sure folks have already been citing, including the gender equity analysis that just came out in our report from Pittsburgh Centers, "The Problem of Racial Inequity." And we see this as, at the core of key human rights challenges in our city. And these reflect challenges in the country as a whole. And these are challenges that the United States is being called to account for in the international community. We're using this opportunity to convene people in the community to discuss ways more deeply, what are the causes of these violations and how can we fix them? And so we will be coming back to you in the spring as we complete our review of human rights and centering race and how can we address the deep and longstanding racial disparities in our region. And we have a number of recommendations that are emerging as we discuss these ideas and look to other cities to see what they've done to try to remedy some of the past structural violence against people of African descent in our country. And I think what cities can do and what Pittsburgh has agreed to be a leader on when it committed to becoming a human rights city in 2011, we need to promote a culture of human rights and do much more to put resources and leadership behind that commitment. We can prioritize work to eliminate racial discrimination and inequities in all areas of government operations and encourage other institutions in our region, including the major employers and educational institutions, to remedy all areas of racial discrimination and disparity. We also need to implement the international treaties to which the United States is party, including the Convention on the Elimination of All Forms of Racial Discrimination. This is our legal obligation, and city officials are legally obligated to carry these out. And there are a number of reviews that we can point you to where international officials have made specific recommendations.
Thanks, Jackie.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
We look forward to being...
You're welcome to leave that with us and we'll pass it out. The clerk will make sure members get it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
What neighborhood are you from?
From Park Place.
Okay. Thank you all very much for being here. With that, I will close the public comment portion of the council meeting. I'll turn it over to members if they wish to make comment. Yep, Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you. I just want to thank everyone for coming down. I definitely recognize a few members of the public who have been in a number of meetings around the Gender Equity Commission, that the women on council here were cosponsors on creating. It's been four years now. And so I want to make sure that we have a chance to talk offline about the results of the report. If you haven't had a chance to read it yourself, the press release was a couple of weeks ago in the mayor's office. And we've had a number of important conversations with members of the public, even this week, convening especially women leaders from the African-American community, from a whole host of dozens of organizations, and really trying to find out a way to just not have another report that sits on the shelves that talks about things that have already happened or current conditions, but to translate that into action, into policies that this body or other bodies of government can take action on to make a difference, right? And that there's a lot of reaction rightfully to another report saying how bad things are, when we've had reports from 10 years ago, from 20 years ago, from 30 years ago, and things aren't getting better. And so I think the burden and the responsibility here is to say, "Okay, let's try to actually do better." And not just acknowledge the report, but to take action on it. So I want to thank everyone for coming down and reiterating that and having continuing conversations.
Thanks, Councilwoman.
Yeah, I'd just thank everyone for coming down as well, and I thank Councilwoman Gross for serving on the commission on behalf of council. She's done a really great job in making sure she's keeping us included and updated, but also very aware of the folks that were not included, that need to be included in any further discussions, especially action items. So I want to thank her for that, for her role in that, and to hope that we get to a place where we realize we are all in this together. So, thank you.
And I'd just like to say thank you all for coming down. Actually, we had one speaker from, talking about UPMC, and there was a lawsuit, lawsuit put on them for taxes by Mayor Ravenstall. Since then, this administration has taken that away. And I really believe that we should have that lawsuit go through. And yes, I think it is totally unfair. I see it happen by other hospitals, that people are treated fairly, but others, I don't. So thank you very much, and I think we should all work together and not just talk about it, actually do it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Comment, Councilman?
Sure. Two things. First of all, Councilwoman Vell is also, like myself, very, very interested in this. He could not be here because of a previous scheduled meeting, so I'm just echoing, do not mistake his lack of physically being here from his concern. Second of all, as I said earlier, for those really not hopefully in the room, but others who are serious about this issue, I highly recommend them reading, you know, the debt by Randall Robinson, which is sort of the beginning of having this conversation. This is the best, this is the right conversation to have in our nation. As you know, there's H.R. Bill 40 that some of the, which is a House bill in the Federal House, U.S. House Representatives, that many of our Democratic presidential candidates have supported. Two things I'll say. First of all, my interest is place-based. I have been very, very influenced by sociologist Dr. Wilson's work in terms of concentrated poverty. And I really believe that whatever we do, we should tie this conversation about reparations to place-based strategies, because the bulk of African-Americans still live in African-American communities, right? And so when we start to rebuild Homewood and Lincoln Lemington and Larmour and, you know, the North Side and the West and then the South Side and the Hill District, when we start to rebuild those neighborhoods, I believe that's part of making them a priority. They have been disinvested in for 56 years, it's time to invest in them. That's the number one. That's really my interest is to talk about pouring resources, disproportionate resources into these places that have been traditional homes for African-Americans and still a place where the majority of them live. And the second thing, and I'm going to make this promise to you, this is not the end of this conversation. I have been very moved by what you've said. Brother Rahim, you and I have been, you know, we know each other a very long time, right? Back from your advocacy for gangs, I've been a fan of yours from back in those days. And I am going to help pick up, I don't know if I can do it by myself, but I will certainly support this and help pick up this mantle. It's time to have this conversation in this city. It is way overdue. And the other part I think we need to talk about is, because everyone is focused on the resource part, but the other part, which is just important, is the acknowledgement... acknowledgement that there has been a historical, systematic, structural oppression of people in this country, and others have profited from their, from their, from the redlining, from discrimination, from systematic disinvestment. It wasn't just that people were hurt. It wasn't just that they want resources, but there is an understanding that this, this culture wasn't accidental. There's been a, there's been a systematic, intentional, from the war on drugs, right, to just, you know, the mass incarceration, to just a variety of policies that have systematically been targeted to oppress African-Americans. And so I intend to have this conversation. This, this is the right conversation to have. This is the right time to have it. So let's, let's have this conversation. And so on behalf of Councilwoman Lovell and I, I'm telling you, you have my word that this is not the end of this conversation. This is simply the beginning of this conversation for our city.
Okay. Thanks, Councilman. Is there anything further from members? Okay. Seeing none, may I have a motion to adjourn the public hearing?
Mr. Trump.
I'm sorry. So moved? In a second?
He wants to make a call.
I've closed the public comment portion of the, of the, of the meeting. I'm sorry, sir.
No, it's okay. You have your time.
Yes.
But we can still talk to us.
Sure. Okay.
Do you have the same time?
No, sir. We've had your three minutes. Yep.
Yeah, after physical, we can talk individually.
Yep. Okay. So moved. Word.[1742.42]